This time I would like to open tonight's trustee's meeting. Stand for the pleasure of the legions, please.
Let me introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one more time for all service members. I'd like to thank all for attending tonight's meeting. Since Veterans Day is next week, I'd like to mention that there are a few Veterans Day observances taking place in our village. The first one will be on Saturday, November 6th, at 12 noon at the Rainbow Monument, which is located at the intersection of St. James Street South and Clinton Road. This ceremony is being conducted by the Long Island Chapter of the Forty-Second Division Association. As background, the Sixty-Ninth Regiment serving as the Hundred-Sixty-Fifth Infantry in World War I was one of the Twenty-Six National Guardians that made up the Forty-Second Rainbow Division. Also an observance of Veterans Day is a ceremony hosted by the William Bratt Fraternal Post, number 265, on Thursday, November 11th. They will be at the library at 10:00 AM to host a Meet the Veterans event. The full Veterans Day ceremony will begin at 10:45 AM at the monuments on Seventh Street, west of the library grounds. In addition, the American Legion Auxiliary will be distributing poppies to honor deceased veterans. I hope that if you are unable to attend either of these events, you will take the time to remember all of the veterans who have served in the armed forces. Moving on to the agenda this evening is a public hearing with regard to a proposed local law, which is a local law adding Chapter Seventy-Eight to the Village Code entitled Cannabis Prohibition. The village has until December 31st to take action on this topic. You're all welcome to give your comments on this topic during the public hearing. We have placed information on this topic on the village website. There are also handouts available here at Village Hall at the front counter. I now will call upon the project heads to give the commissioning Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I've dealt with the agenda, but I'd like a couple of reminders. The daylight savings time is coming up. It's already darker earlier. Please, for security reasons, if you have lights on your house, make sure if there's timers that are set for earlier hours. Also, this reminder, while we're at it, lock the doors, the car doors. There is a significant rise among adjoining jurisdictions. But also, I would remind everybody, with more darker hours, please drive carefully. We will be continuing our strict traffic enforcement. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, one comment. I also noticed, this has to do with the commissioner, but as he mentioned, daylight savings time, I also noticed that Verizon is now requiring you to dial an area code. So if you have an alarm system, you might want to check into it to ensure that that works to add the area code to the alarm system.
Thank you, trustee Doolittle. Next, Chief Moody.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, residents. I have nothing on the agenda tonight, but to follow up with Commissioner Jackson about daylight savings, be sure when you change the clocks, make sure you change your batteries and your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. It's ready to advance. Bill Schreiber, my name is Wu. Is she on Zoom?
No, we have our C in here.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. We just have one item on the agenda. We have one item on the agenda that is requested for authorization for a transfer to the promotion field for comprehensive access fees in the month of 1,084 for an employee left from the recreation department.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. This is going faster than I thought. Next, the goodness pretended.
Good evening, Mayor. Board of trustees. I have nothing on the agenda tonight, but more than happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Peter B.
Yes, Mayor, as is common, although I assisted in all of the agenda items, I think, I have no specific item on the agenda, although I would like to remind the public that the public hearing on the cannabis does not relate to the ability of citizens to utilize cannabis products. That has now been legalized throughout the state of New York. The hearing is solely on the issue of whether the state will license their retail sales and on-premises consumption of cannabis-related products. And the proposed local law would opt out of that such that the state would not license facilities in Garden City. Thank you.
Let me just ask a follow-up question, because this is a little confusion. If we opt out now, if the public order is passed and we opt out now, that we could at some future date authorize it. The problem, the issue is that if we don't opt out now, we never can opt out. Isn't that correct?
That is precisely correct. I have pointed out to the board that if we opt out now, it does give the village the opportunity to see how well retail sales operations work in all the communities. And if it works that well, the people want it, you can always then opt back in, that would be first of January. But if you don't opt out now, you can never opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, those administration, well sponsored.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, for the first time in a very long time, I have nothing on the agenda at all, but I'm happy to take any questions from the board. I'm in matter of this is the first I've ever heard. That's amazing. Okay, that's, then we'll move on. We'll move on. Do any of the trustees have any comments or questions at this time? Yes. Just a quick one. Chief Moody, just give a quick overview. I know you do a lot of fire safety around the village. I think it'd be nice for some of the residents to hear some overview on some of the nice things you're doing in the department. Yes, fire, for sure. The Fire Department Fire Prevention Committee has been going around the POAs and the schools and the National Charity League for fire safety. Actually, tonight, we're doing a presentation. I'm not there. At the Wyndham tonight for the residents that are there. And so far, many other organizations have a lot to, we're looking forward to go to the GCAA as well for those kids that have missed it, they don't make it to school. Today, we did Locust School. We did 158 kids today. They loved it. We brought the trucks over. They gave them a tour of the fire trucks and a nice little fire safety talk. It's a good thing. Any residents want any questions or concerns, email the Fire Department. We'll be happy to assist you when we can. Thank you. And also, the Fire Department responded to a terrible fire in Franklin Square. It was a basement fire, and luckily, nobody was hurt, but we were one of the first responders to the scene. So, good work, chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, the agenda items, are there any sense and comments on agenda items? Anyone on Zoom? Do we have any questions on agenda items from people who are on Zoom? Silence. Is that correct? No one? Okay. Let's move on then. We'll move on down to the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing, which is a local law adding Chapter Seventy-Eight to the Village Code entitled Cannabis Prohibition? Is it second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any intentions? I guess Mr. Wu knows that here. Okay. Peter, can you pick this up for discussion?
Yes, at this time, members of the public would be invited to comment on the proposed local law and to speak on that topic.
Good evening. My name is Charles Kelly. I live on Kilburn Road. I stand here in support of the Chapter Seventy-Eight and adding it to the Village Code. As a federal prosecutor, I have dealt with a series of events relating to the sale of various drugs out of convenience stores on Long Island, including synthetic cannabis and K2 spice. And it's often packaged with cartoon characters on the bags. The Seven Dwarfs were one of the groups that were used by certain defendants. Joker, Hazy Peachy King, a lot of attractive titles and catchy titles that I think made them directed more towards underage purchasers at these places. I find a lot of the pot sales going on packaged as gummies and other items to be reminiscent of those prosecutions. And it's a short walk from marijuana to putting a little spray on it and making it a, if not deadly, certainly a chemical that can cause serious illness. And we had a lot of young people taken to emergency rooms in connection with the sales out of one convenience store on Long Island. In sum, I think it's a short walk from selling marijuana out of the store to spicing it up, spraying it, and selling illegal drugs. And it puts a significant burden on law enforcement to try to shut something like that down. We typically had to get search warrants, do one or two undercover buys to get the search warrants, and then execute the search warrant. It's a significant burden on law enforcement and a significant cost to the village. So I urge the board to adopt Chapter Seventy-Eight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who must wait tonight? Please, say your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Trentis Millen, One St. Paul's Crescent. I'm not new to village politics. I volunteered as an ambassador to the CPOI during my time at Garden City High School, and I feel very concerned about the board's decision to opt out of cannabis sales. And I'm more concerned about the way it was decided than the decision itself. So I think the Board of Trustees should not be making knee-jerk decisions like this. Intentions to opt out were declared without even reaching out to the residents first and engaging public opinion. And if a petition reaches the right amount of signatures, the decision must be made up to public referendum. But the petition should not even be needed in the first place. A major decision like this should be based on public referendum to begin with. And going beyond the mechanism of decision, I believe it would be illogical, hypocritical, and pointless for the village to opt out of cannabis sales. The only reason some will be opposed to it is because they personally do not like it. I do not like alcohol. I do not like being around people who are so intoxicated they become aggressive or physically ill. But I'm not demanding that bars and liquor stores in the village should be prohibited. I simply choose to stay away from them. I do not like cigarettes or the odor they produce, but I'm not going out of my way to prevent anyone from eating, purchasing them, or smoking them, or starting a business selling them. Consumption is and will be legal statewide. No opt-out can change that. All it would do is look at business opportunities for entrepreneurs in the village. No matter what, it will still be legal to light up a joint outside Village Hall. The village would miss out on a 3% sales tax on all cannabis products that could be sold in the village. This could potentially be used to reduce real estate taxes for residents. And a study published in Regional Science and Urban Economics found that when dispensaries opened in Colorado, crime rates declined at a 19% faster rate than surrounding neighborhoods without dispensaries. It's very likely this is in part the result of diminishing the illicit market and replacing a legal one. Now, I have a lot of respect for all village officials, paid and volunteer, but I would like to respectfully address some comments made at the October 21st meeting. One official stated that he did not care about the potential increase in tax revenue because he's more concerned about the quality of life. However, there is no evidence supporting the claim that cannabis business will reduce the quality of life in the village. Using current New York State medical dispensaries and other states that don't use dispensaries as a precedent, these are not low-end, rundown head shops. These dispensaries are beautifully decorated, heavily secured, well-maintained, and often compared to art galleries. Another official stated he was concerned that people may use cannabis and, quote, "walk into traffic," despite there being no basis to this claim. There's a greater risk of this happening to a person who's impaired by alcohol. A study published in Traffic Injury Prevention Journal by researchers from the University of Minnesota found that cannabis legalization did not lead to increase in motor vehicle crashes or pedestrian-involved motor vehicle crashes. And this conclusion was based on data studied from 1991 through 2018 in Colorado, Washington, and Oregon. So instead of allowing a legally regulated market opting out, we'll just promote the black market illicit sales of unregulated, untested cannabis sold by dealers that may also be selling other dangerous substances. That being said, I ask of the Board of Trustees that you please make this decision up to a public referendum. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers, unless there's someone on Zoom.
There are people.
Yes.
Bob, more votes.
Bob?
On you.
On you.
There we go. You're on. You're good now.
Okay. My background is medical. I'm in the medical field for about 30 years. And I'm going with the FDA as far as cannabis goes. The FDA has approved the marketing application of cannabis for the treatment of any disease of the patient. The agency, however, approved one cannabis-derived drug product and three synthetic drugs related to for medical use only. And only provided by a restricted, from a licensed provider. It's important to remember that the FDA has not approved any other cannabis products currently available on the market. A 2018 study in Colorado, which had cannabis for, I mean, since 2013 or 14, showed that emergency group of cannabis related to marijuana increased 52%. Hospitalization increased 148%, while traffic-related deaths increased 151% since the legalization. It is only a prelude to what our future could be here in New York by the passage of this ill-advised and potentially deadly marijuana ruling by our government. It is my hope that our board directors will vote to not license the sale of marijuana in our village, like Laura Clark, M. St. Dr. Senator, Free Court, R. G., and Melissa Clark. With the gain in tax revenues, that outweighs the penalty on to the residents of all areas. I know we can't stop it, but maybe we can at least slow it down and be on the right side of this.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on Zoom?
Ann Griffin. Griffin?
Hi there. Ann Griffin, 166 Garden Street. I had not planned on saying anything tonight. One thing I want to say is I personally don't have a problem with marijuana being legalized. I think there's a time and a place. It's a personal decision for an adult. My big concern is that our community is so family-based. What I think needs to be discussed at length is what communities around us will be selling marijuana and who will not? Who would be coming in from outside of our community? I'm not naive enough to think that people in our community aren't going to be going and buying it. I'm not talking about that, and I don't really care. But I'm thinking, how would it change our very family-oriented village? Again, they think, who would be coming in and out? And who around us is, will be selling marijuana illegally? Are we going, you know, if people, if there aren't a lot of villages near us selling it, therefore, you're going to have a lot of people coming here, some adults, some younger, whatever. The other thing is, oh, we woke us together. Okay. So who's coming here? And then, my thoughts are, it seems to me that it's almost a no-brainer to wait and find out what happens in other communities. It would be a totally different discussion if we had to make the decision and we could never go back. But if there's still more information to gather, which I can't imagine that there wouldn't be, why wouldn't we hold off and then find out what happens to, like, you know, similar communities, how it's affected them? And then if as a community, we decide it's a good choice for us, we could then opt in? That's it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, chief. Next person on Zoom. Please state your name, address.
Hi, I'm Lawrence Galli. I live on 68 Second Street. Like Ann, I hadn't planned on speaking, but there are a few things that I would like to say. First off, I think that education around cannabis has to be the forefront of all that we do, whether it's on a local level or a state level or a national level. And I believe that the information around cannabis has been skewed to the negative side for, you know, probably 50 years or more. Cannabis can not only be used as medicine, but it can be used as building material, it can be used as clothing, it can be used as food. There are so many other things, applications associated with cannabis and cannabis legalization that we're not even thinking about. And I think as a community, we would want to be on the forefront of that. I agree with Ann who just spoke before me in saying that I don't think we should opt in right away. I think we should get all the facts, that we should learn what New York State has in store. But I think being one of the leading communities on Long Island, we should not opt out unanimously without having all the facts. I would love to help educate more people on cannabis and how it can help everyone. So, I would love to opt in. I am not opposed to opting out of now, but I would love to get more education. And I think that as legalization progresses, you will not only find that cannabis is not bad for you, but that it might even be good for you, especially in ways where you're not smoking joints or eating gummies, but where you can take a pill and it can be full regulated. And I think this just goes sort of with the course of federally legalization. Like I said, I'm 44 years old. I've been using cannabis for a long time. I know many, many members of this community, upstanding members that use cannabis, and they're going to get it regardless of where it is. Legalization is going to bring that to the forefront. They're going to be able to grow their gardens. They're going to be able to do whatever they want. I think we should be at the forefront and help people understand the benefits, the harms, and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tricia, do you want to speak? Tricia? I can't unmute yourself. Beth, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I'm Beth, I'm at 84 11th Street. And I would just like to say, as Lawrence actually alluded to, that there's a lot we don't know about marijuana. In fact, to compare alcohol to marijuana is really, you really can't do it. They're both two drugs, and one is highly, highly studied, and that's alcohol. And one is not very highly studied at all yet, and that is marijuana. So, we don't really know what we're getting into with this. For our purposes, I say opt it out. My sister lives in a community not on Long Island that has a pot dispensary, and it attracted drug dealers, I think, who wanted to sell weed because they saw that's, you know, there was a market there and they can sell it cheaper. I mean, all of a sudden, she saw, unfortunately, cars with tinted windows, driving slow with the windows down, playing loud music, just kind of slowly driving around the block where the dispensary was. It was unfortunate, but that was the situation. And, you know, the police kind of were a little bit hands-off. So, that's just anecdotal, and that's my feeling. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tricia, do you want to speak? You had your hand up. Anyone else on Zoom would like to speak? If so, unmute yourself.
No one else?
No.
In that case, Mayor, if you're prepared, the board member could make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah. I'm interested in these comments that were just made. I think we should make, just call a motion to extend this hearing to the next meeting so we can get more information and discuss the ideas of a referendum. I know there was some language in the law that I think it said states a permissive referendum, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir. The local law is required by this New York State, in order to opt out, the local law must be passed subject to a permissive referendum. So therefore, that process is such that one or more citizens would circulate a petition requesting that the matter be put out to a referendum vote. If that petition were filed, then, and properly informed and proper numbers, then the matter would be put out to a vote to the public.
Peter, can you go a little further on that petition? How many signatures would it be? Just one?
No, no, sir. I forget the exact number. It's a percentage of the registered voters, as I recall, and I can certainly get that information to you tomorrow. I don't have that in front of me.
Mayor, I have a problem with delaying this. We've talked about this now for at least the last two weeks, the last two or three weeks. On our website, we have put the marijuana legalization information from Night Camp. So I really have a problem holding this off at camp. I really think that we should vote on it tonight and then move forward.
I agree with John. Parts the referendum, that is automatically part of the law. So if more than 20% of the registered voters as of the last election, that number were to sign a petition, would automatically go to a referendum. So that is an option after we pass that. It is subject to that. And I also would rather not license. We've had the information for quite a long time, and we're approaching the end of the year.
Council, is there a time limit of when the permissive referendum can be filed?
There is. I'm seeing if I can call up Section 24 of the municipal home rule right now.
I think it's 30 days. Within 30 days of passing, we have to receive a petition, and it needs that number of signatures for it to go to the referendum, according to my notes. And I think this is in the handout.
Yes.
I know it was a lot for people, you know.
Yeah. It is a lot.
With those comments, Mayor, I think that people will have a chance to have a referendum if they have enough votes. So I'd be in favor of voting tonight.
So we poll the trustees at the moment. The, I have the language from Texas.
We have one more person on Zoom that would like to speak.
Please.
Christina Russo, would you like to unmute yourself and speak? She was. Tricia, do you want to speak? You had your hand up. You're unmuted if you'd like to speak, Tricia.
Okay. Let's move on.
Apparently, Mayor, I just did some quick research, and the law provides that it is subject to a permissive referendum under Section 24 of the general minimum of the municipal home rule. That section in turn refers you to Article Nine of the village law. And it says, within 10 days after the adoption of any resolution by the board which is subject to a permissive referendum, the village clerk shall, in the same manner as provided for a general village election, publish a notice which sets forth the date of the adoption, an abstract of the resolution, concisingly stating the purpose of it, and that it is subject to a permissive referendum. There is then a process for the form of the petition, as was indicated by Trustee Clannion, a percentage of the voters, and then the matter is put to vote to the public.
So we should make a motion to close this public hearing and then make a motion to vote?
You are authorized to do that. The local law must be enacted by December 31st, even if it were subject to a permissive referendum, whether it passed or failed, after December 30th, which will not change that you have enacted it by December 30th.
I agree with closing the hearing there.
Justin?
I said.
Public hearing is closed. The next motion is to have a vote on, just the language today. To enact a local law adding Chapter Seventy-Eight to the Village Code entitled Cannabis Prohibition.
Is there a motion to adopt the local law? Is there a motion to adopt the local law?
I would move to read out the local law.
Moved by Trustee Flanagan, seconded by
A second.
Trustee Flanagan. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It appears to be unanimous. Thank you, the local law is enacted, but remains subject to a permissive referendum.
Next on the business is the approval of the minutes of the previous board trustee's meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2021 regular board meeting? I'll make a motion, make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to move right to the consent calendar for discussion? No? Can you make a motion then to approve the consent calendar?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Bless you.
Bless you. God bless you. I've given you a lot of glory. I always say it's four times.
You okay?
I'm fine, sorry. God bless you four times.
Thank you. I'd like to open before now to any citizen comments on non-agenda items only. Please take your name and address, please come up to the podium. These are non-agenda items.
Good evening, my name is Jack Hartog, I'm at eighty-two Second Street, and I had a question related to, I believe Irene mentioned last meeting, that we received, the village received something like a million dollars in fees for change fees for five-five-five Stewart. And if that number is correct, I was on Zoom and I didn't have an opportunity to ask the question, but it seems like an awful lot of money for change fees. I'm curious to the nature of all those changes that were generating such large fees.
Can you address this?
Yes, those fees were building department fees for inspections and permits and so forth, for the construction of the building, five-five-five. No changes were submitted.
No changes since the original?
No changes since the original application.
So is a million dollars, would that be a normal magnitude?
Absolutely, for a building that size, yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? A non-agenda judge, please step up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll wait till the trustee, sorry. Anyway, all right. Proceed. So, when we concluded the last meeting, I'm speaking about the legalization fees. I think there's a consensus, even listening carefully to what the village council said and looking at the YouTube, it's clear that we have a concurrence that this law that's on the books does not apply to an applicant for a new installation, and that there is a process that's being undertaken in which to revise that law. And I just want to follow up with that because counsel, at the last meeting, when I asked the question about the application of the law for the facts that we had, he referred to village policy as saying that that policy was clear, and he did not say anything further than that. So I did foil that policy, and I did receive a response today, this morning, from the village clerk. And what I received, and I think it's distributed to you, I asked him to do that, it's simply a flyer, if you will, it says, "How to apply for a building permit." That's all it says, that's the policy. So that policy clearly has no application to the payment of legalization fees. I just, I want to talk about those fees with some specificity, but I did also foil counsel's report to the board that was delivered two weeks ago, I think in response to the memos that I had written regarding this issue. And I did foil that, I did, it was foiled on October 25th, and the village clerk acknowledged that, and she has told me despite request, there is no response to that. So, if you would, Mr. Mayor, because I think I deserve a response, and I don't know why it takes ten days to respond, or twenty days to respond to a report that counsel has and is already delivered to the board. So if you will, I would like you to ask counsel, what is his response, so we could move on. It's a transparent document, I don't see any state secrets in that, I don't know what he asserts, but I'd like to know what his response is, if that's possible.
So you foiled this information, and you didn't get an answer?
Correct, well, I got an answer from Karen, that she said that she got my foil request, and she says, "This letter is the knowledge receipt of your foil request where you seek access to village records contained to it, I got the village policies, but I didn't get counsel's report to the board on the legitimacy of legalization of the fees."
Peter, do you have a report that you'd like to?
Mayor, as you may recall, I was asked to report to the board. I would suggest there's a subtle distinction between reporting back to the board and creating a report. I reported back to the board in an email in which I gave my legal advice to the board regarding the need for a change of the law, or the absence of such a need, and should the board consider it. I believe that I also suggested, as my legal advice, a form of local law that you might wish to adopt. If that's the email to which counsel refers, I would suggest that it is a privileged attorney-client document and not available under FOIL. FOIL provides that the clerk should acknowledge receipt of the request, which I believe has been done, and typically, in a situation like this, Karen would send that request over to our office, we would respond to Karen as to what we felt was appropriate, and then Karen would ultimately get back in touch with the applicant to indicate the availability or nonavailability, or the nonexistence or existence of such a document. In this case, to the best of my knowledge, there is no report that was generated by my office that would be available for public inspections.
So if it's so clear to him tonight, why does it take me to come to a meeting to ask you, to ask him a question, which he could have responded to a week ago? I mean, if there is a system of government that's supposed to be responsive, I find that a failure in dealing with residents who ask questions and foil requests. We should be able to respond to those quickly, particularly when it's in the knowledge and the hands of counsel. It's not a complicated thing to pick up the phone or send an email to Karen and say what he said today, now whether, I'd like to get that response, and if it's in writing, I understand it's a privilege, but somebody, you or the board should review it to see whether that information should be available to the public. I understand confidential, I understand privilege, but privilege can be waived when in fact the facts show that it should be waived, so I leave that to you.
I think we'll take it into consideration. We have the information.
I've seen.
Excuse me, Mr. President. We'll take it under consideration, I think the board should review your modifications to the law, and then we should discuss it in the next meeting and decide if we have to make those changes.
All right, so we, may I proceed?
Because I do agree with you, Tom, in terms of language, the language is ambiguous, it's unclear, and I think we've gone over this
Okay, I don't need to.
For three sessions now.
Okay, I'm not going to speak to that issue, I just want a report that is available, that should be available, and if not, why not? I expect to get time, I expect to get timely responses. So, if you, what has been said, and is there a draft, or is there a timeline in which the new law will be, or the proposed new law is to be available to the public?
Like I said, Tom, we're going to discuss it, the board will discuss it later, so I want to talk.
If the affairs provide this, we'll look at it.
All right, so, but I do want to talk about the building fees, because you know what? We've been talking about abstracts, abstract items like legalization, but let's take a look at these fees, because I think it's important that people understand it, and I want to hand out a schedule, but I may, Karen, you want to? Now, we hear, and George tried to, George tried to explain this last week, but I think this, I apologize, it's in writing, in my writing, it's notoriously bad. I think you need a grasp of what's happened here in terms of building department fees. All right, so, I'm only dealing with residential fees, all right? These fees, I have the actual building department printed fee schedule, which I can give to you, I made an extract of it. The building department fees are initially based on one thousand dollars, and then you add twenty dollars for every additional thousand dollars. I've done the comparison between March seventeen, two thousand sixteen, and June fifteen, two thousand seventeen, we've talked about that. And these are the basic fees, the building permit, plumbing, electrical, mechanical. March seventeen, two thousand sixteen, all those fees were a hundred and fifty dollars. A year later, the building department fee went from a hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars. Plumbing went from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Electrical, a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars, plus, while there's no radiation of twenty dollars, there is an inspection that you have to pay for now, which is two hundred dollars, and the mechanical fee went from a hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and seventy-five dollars, which went two and three times now. It has been said that we made comparisons to other villages, but so far, George has not been able to get that of those comparisons. They may be gone, I don't know, but it's certainly a huge increase, we talked about it, and of course, the fees that are coming into the building department reflect this dramatic increase. And then when you do three times the value of the permits, you see how far, how they increase. In one year, they went from four hundred and fifty dollars to twelve hundred dollars, four hundred and fifty to eight twenty-five, four fifty to six hundred, four fifty to eight twenty-five. This is real money to people who are seniors, and they're living on some income plus others, but that's a tremendous increase. And then just think about, think about what you're asking about and the practicality of it. When you will get the building department fee schedule, the words used, this legalization fee, which is an unusual word, in my opinion, it says, "Maintain existing construction as built." So the purpose of it is to deal with people who fail to get permits and build something and then find out that they need to get the permit, and that's a permit for something that is being maintained, has built. You look at these air conditioning units, and what you see is you're taking the old out, discarding it, all right? And this is just one piece of it, but think about this, you're discarding an existing unit, and when you start to add it up, you look at the installation, and by the way, these fees, this is important too, they've been charging these fees, look, notice these dates, March seventeen, two thousand sixteen, June fifteen, two thousand seventeen, the law was not adopted until October nineteen, two thousand seventeen, and the very words of Trustee Flanagan was, "That's the first time that we increased the multiplication to three." So what law was it that was governing in March fifteen, seventeen, two thousand sixteen, and in June fifteen, two thousand seventeen? That's just, that's just part of the mess that exists out there. All right, but the point of this is, you're taking a law which will eventually, hopefully, adopt, and is going to apply to the very purpose that you're using, the old law, which really doesn't apply, to achieve, which is to tell people that they need to come in and get a permit that is going to cover their existing unit that they're maintaining. Has no application really to an air conditioner. And I've heard them say, "Well, we've got ducts to comply, we're going to open walls to see the ducts," I mean, give us a break, will you? So, that's my point. And I think you really, when you look at what's happening here, I just took the ten thousand dollar installation, okay, for an HVAC utilization fee. Well, you get the mechanical fee, which is eight twenty-five, and if you add nine thousand dollars of value, that's another five hundred and forty dollars, and then you deal with the electrical, that's six hundred dollars, you pay two thousand dollars for something you're going to throw away, and now you pay for a new installation, six, seven hundred dollars, that makes no sense, nobody I know that I speak to about this has any justification, they just think it's insane. I mean, you can't have a law which leads to an absurdity, and that's what's happening, and that has to end. And frankly, I don't know how you drafted it to make it fit the circumstances that you really intended it to do way back when. You know, I said special counsel, I know, you should understand everybody, I understand that, and you're not lawyers, all right? I think I'm equal to Peter B. as a lawyer that can read and interpret statutes. He has the power, I don't. So all I have to do is the power of advocacy, and that's what you have to look at here. And the sooner you look at it, the better, and the sooner you look at all the ramifications of what's happened here, the better, because the village deserves that. Thank you.
Just to make sure I understand, I know your legalization fee issue also is your other point today that I just made the building fees are too high.
Well, I think you need, in fairness, I think when you jump fees more than double, two and a half times, that's what the daughter board did, frankly, they did.
I just want to make sure I understood, because I think we can always
At some point, yes. Yes, I think when you get past this particular issue, the point is, people, you need to review the fee schedules, all right? Whether, you know, you could say three times something, but three times a hundred is three hundred, three times a thousand is three thousand.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure. I understand, because you've mentioned seniors being impacted, I'm thinking that has less impact actually in seniors than building fees, so that's why I was thinking.
I think you need a careful look at the fees and make some proper comparisons to see what's out there. We have fifty-eight jurisdictions, county, towns, and cities, so there's a lot of variety out there, and the limited research I did shows that we're not, we seem to be on the high side, all right? But it needs a more thorough examination, I think the residents deserve that. A lot of questions about this now, a lot of people don't worry about.
I understand your point, I just, I guess I don't agree that it affects seniors more than the opposite, but thank you for sharing.
I have a question, does that, do you have any knowledge of when this occurred, or any information about when the fees jumped from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, the president, do you have any knowledge of that? Is that a research done, you know?
I'm not sure.
We talked about this in the last meeting.
I'm sure there's research done, Mr. Mayor, as far as that, I don't have that handy right now, but if the board requests to do analysis, I'd be happy to do that.
Mayor, I was here then, I don't want to, I don't want to say something that may not be accurate, I would suggest that just have people look into it, and I think, you know, I'll be glad to, if he wants to give me a call, or, I don't think, Tristan Foley was here, but there was a reason, there was a reason for it, and I just don't want to shoot my mouth off until I have a chance to look at it.
Do the research first, and then you make a comment.
Just briefly, the contractors that have been through my house in the last two or three years or so, I've asked them how our village fees compare with neighboring communities, and unanimously, they've said that our fees are at least twice as high as any neighboring communities.
Thank you.
Electrical, plumbing, you name it.
And they're Nassau County contractors, right? Not New York City contractors?
All Nassau County.
You would say one. I'd just like to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, because it seems to be coming to a head now. I did a survey of as many villages in Nassau County that I could get answers from, and I got fifteen responses. Out of the fifteen, four had a three times fee, two had a two times fee. two had a two times fee, and the rest had either less than one time or zero fee. So this is a sample. I recognize that it's not a thorough statistical accuracy to do only 15, but I'd be willing to go further. I think my survey is probably, I would guess that it's accurate, that sufficient number of samples to arrive at the conclusion that we are high. We're definitely, and I think it's incumbent upon the building department to let us know how they arrived at three times.
We should do that. We'll definitely do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience, please?
Charles Kelly Kildner, Merode. I just wanted to support Mr. Lamberty, Mr. Hartog, and Mr. Salem, and salute his fine letter to the Garden City News recently on this issue. I feel that the fees are too high. Obviously, it was improper to jack them up so dramatically in such a short time period, giving the public little notice that the cost of their constructions were going to increase because of the dramatic, quick increase in the fees. But separate from that, I do feel, based on anecdotal evidence, that these fees are much higher than some of the surrounding jurisdictions. And I thank the three gentlemen for their comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, any other comments from the audience? Anyone on Zoom?
Any comments from the Zoom audience?
Not seeing any comments, I ask now a motion to close the meeting. We need to adjourn. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for having me.